Whoops, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman John Patrice.
Here.
Alderman Nguyen.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burris.
Hi. Here.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, March 22, 2010, meeting of the Evanston City Council. I have some public announcements. The 20th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, recommitment to inclusion of persons with disabilities. Whereas on July 26, 1990, President George H.W. Bush signed into law the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities. And whereas this legislation established a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities. And whereas the ADA has expanded opportunities for Americans with disabilities by reducing barriers, changing perceptions, and increasing full participation in community life. And whereas, however, the full promise of the ADA will only be reached if public entities remain committed in their efforts to fully implement the ADA. And whereas, on the 20th anniversary of the ADA, we, the City of Evanston, celebrate and recognize the progress that has been made by reaffirming the principles of equality and inclusion and recommitting our efforts to reach full ADA compliance. Now, therefore, I, Elizabeth B. Tisdall, Mayor of the City of Evanston and the Evanston City Council, do hereby reaffirm our commitment to work toward full Americans with Disabilities Act compliance in all sponsored programs and facilities in the city of Evanston, Illinois, in celebration of their 20th anniversary. Do you want to come up and get the petition? You want... Hold on. It's a mayor's problem, not yours. We'll get this right. Give it back to me. Here we go. Ready, set. Got it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's an important acknowledgement in a very special week, but I'd like to make a note of Mary Friedel, who's in the audience, who has been an untiring representative of people with disabilities and, in fact, appeared before Community Development Block Grant Committee on a regular basis without fail, rain, snow, sleet, or hail. Mary came first by herself and then her husband Chuck brought her. And one of the reasons she was at our committee was because family-focused building was no longer, it had been, accessible. And in addition to recognizing Mary, I would like to recognize Family Focus because they put all of their resources, money, and attention, and volunteers, and staff, to bringing the building into compliance by installing a new elevator, which wasn't just a matter of putting a new elevator in a shaft, it was a matter of having to build a shaft that wasn't there, extending the building. And I just wanted to say that I know the CD Committee members and the council are all very appreciative, number one, of Mary's just dogged efforts on behalf of people who need some assistance and on the part of Family Focus. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Thank you, Mary, and thank you, Alderman Rainey. Next, Google Day in Evanston, March 24, 2010. Whereas Google has launched a nationwide competition among America's cities to respond to their request for information to construct an ultra-high-speed broadband network somewhere in the United States. And whereas the City of Evanston has accepted Google's challenge and is responding to their request for information. And whereas the installation of this high-speed network would enhance all Evanston's residents' access to information and entertainment and place Evanston businesses at a competitive advantage with better access to customers and business partners around the world. And whereas a key element to the city's response to their request for information is to demonstrate community support for this initiative, now, therefore, I, Elizabeth B. Tisdall, Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim March 24, 2010, as Google Day in Evanston, to bring attention to the city's response to Google's request for information and urge every resident, business, and friend of Evanston to go to the city's website, www.cityofevanston.org/googl, and register their support with Google. I guess I give this to all of you, since you're all doing this with us. So there's our proclamation for Google.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Good evening. Before we move on, we wanted just to take a brief moment to update folks on what we are doing. We have up on the screen the city's website, which encourages folks to click and nominate Evanston. And Dave, maybe you could click on that nominate Evanston button to show folks what it takes you to. It takes you then to the Google website. And we would like to ask folks to go to the right-hand side to where it says nominate your community. And then you click on that, and it asks you to sign in with a Google account, which I guess I could tell the entire community my Google email address, but that's not going to work, probably. But anyway, you would sign in there. If you don't have a Google account, then we would ask that you would sign up for one, and you can do that at the box just below. Let's see if it's going to let us in or not. So there you go. So then it's...Dave's already submitted. Thank you very much, Dave. So you fill out the form, and we ask folks to do that. The other thing we'd like to do this evening is...the other thing we'd like to do this evening is show the first of two videos that we've done that we're going to be submitting as part of our application that talks about what the Google network would do for us here in the City of Evanston.
Hi, I'm Donald Kornitz with the City of Evanston, manager of street operations. I can provide real-time updates on snow plowing, street sweeper operations, and road closing. So Google us.
Hi, I'm Paul Schneider, city engineer. I can help citizens use public transportation by providing arrival times for buses, trains, and taxis. Google us.
I'm Brian Barnes, Intuition Questions for the City of Evanston. I could have citizens who can't leave their homes participate in these classes and special events in interactive two-way video streaming. Google us.
My name's Dave Stoneback. I'm the superintendent of water and sewers for Evanston. I can monitor for water quality within the entire distribution system with automatic messaging to my phone. Google us.
Hi, Seth Nagar, senior engineer. I can distribute real-time information about traffic congestion and alternate routes to any device that a citizen uses. Google us.
Hi, I'm Suzette Robinson, interim public works director for the City of Evanston. I can create smart robots that will monitor danger for all conditions, hot holes, and signal out of it. Google us.
Hi, I'm Drew Sloan. I'm the IT manager for the City of Evanston. I could provide a wide variety of sophisticated applications to citizens such as the ability to draw their permits or licenses. I could provide up-to-date information to citizens on various city events, and I could provide real-time information to recover from the effects of a city disaster. So Google us.
Hi, I'm Julie. I'm the skating director here at the Robert Kraft Center. I could update citizens on activities and events with a recreational summer internet TV channel. Google us.
Hi, I'm Officer Keira with the Evanston Police Department. I should use video to communicate with local hospitals during emergencies. Google us.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Tisdall, Mayor of the City of Evanston, Illinois. And this is...
...Molly Mae Moore, Kansas City.
I've been the mayor for 16 years. We could create the most livable city in America. Google us.
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 So we'll be putting that on the Internet as part of our application. We've asked Northwestern University to prepare a video, and they'll be presenting that on Wednesday at our press conference. District 65, Evanston Township High School, Evanston Hospital are all coming to support our efforts with videos of their own talking about what this high-speed network would do for our communities. So thank you, Mayor, for your proclamation, and I hope everyone will be able to join us Wednesday at 1:30 in the parasol room.
Thank you. I have one more proclamation. National Public Health Week, April 5 through 11. Whereas since 1996, the American Public Health Association, through its sponsorship of National Public Health Week, has educated the public policymakers and public health professionals about issues important to improving the public's health. And whereas our nation spends more on health care than any other country, but an estimated 46.3 million Americans do not have health insurance but soon will, millions more do not have access to life-saving clinical preventive services nor have access to cost-effective community-based preventive services. And whereas illnesses caused by tobacco use, poor diet, physical inactivity, and alcohol consumption are potentially preventable. And whereas many neighborhoods lack access to safe walkways and bikeways, are too far from offices, schools, health providers, and grocery stores to walk, and are inaccessible by public transportation. And whereas studies have shown that 10.5 million cases of infectious diseases and 33,000 deaths can be prevented in the United States by the standard childhood immunization series. And whereas, despite challenges, public health professionals and lawmakers are working on policies that place an emphasis on prevention and support a strong public health infrastructure. And whereas, by making a change in our individual communities, we will improve the health of our nation. Now, therefore, I, Elizabeth B. Tisdall, Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim the week of April 5 through 11 as National Public Health Week in the City of Evanston and call upon the citizens of Evanston to observe this month by helping our families, friends, neighbors, coworkers, and leaders better understand the importance of public health to a successful health system in light of this year's theme, "A Healthier America, One Community at a Time." Ivonda, come on up. City Manager, do you have announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, mayors of the City Council. To follow up on our activities for National Public Health Week, I'd like to ask Director Thomas to come back up and talk about those, as well as the launch of our Women Out Walking Initiative.
Thank you. Good evening. Ivonda Thomas. Public health is a science of protecting and improving the health of communities through education, promotion of healthy lifestyles, and research for disease and injury prevention. Public health professionals analyze the effect of health on genetics, personal choice, and the environment in order to develop programs that protect the health of your family and your community. Public health professionals try to prevent problems from happening or reoccurring through implementing educational programs, developing policies, and administering services, and conducting research. Now, this is in contrast to our clinical professionals, such as doctors and nurses, who focus primarily on treating individuals after they become sick or injured. It is also a field that is concerned with limiting health disparities, and a large part of public health is the fight for health care equity, quality, and accessibility. And at this moment, if we can lower or dim the lights, I have a one-minute video that explains the essence, in a simplistic way, what public health really is. So I'd like to acknowledge, as a courtesy of National Public Health Week, the University of Iowa College of Public Health developed that video. So overall, public health is concerned with protecting the health of entire populations. These populations can be as small as your local neighborhood or as big as an entire city. So the Health Department has chosen to address physical activity in a citywide initiative. At this time, I would like to ask Jonathan Webb, our management analyst in the Health Department, to come forward and share how we are addressing population-based services as it relates to physical activity. And I'm going to pass out some information regarding that initiative. Jonathan?
Madam Mayor, City Council members, and Mr. City Manager. Walking has many health benefits, including but not limited to the reduced risk of heart attack, stroke, a reduced risk of breast cancer and type 2 diabetes, and reduced stress levels. In honor of National Public Health Week, the City of Evanston's Health Department will be launching the Women Out Walking Program on Saturday, March 27. The WOW program is a 12-week walking program designed to highlight the importance of physical activity and to encourage a healthy lifestyle. This is the second year that we will offer this program. Last year, we had 500 participants, and this year, we're on pace to have over 700. Through this program, walkers are provided with pedometers and walking journals that will assist them in tracking their steps daily. Weekly step totals are reported and enable women to win prizes through weekly challenges. Examples of these prizes are free memberships to local fitness centers, gift certificates for massages, discounted salon services, gift certificates to local eateries, et cetera. In addition to these weekly challenges, once a month, women will participate in organized walks. Additionally, once a month, we will also offer workshops. During these workshops, we will have presentations on specific women's health issues. Following these presentations will be an opportunity for participants to enjoy fitness class samplers, which include Tai Chi, cardio boxing, belly dancing, et cetera. The goal of this is to use walking as the foundation to introduce women to other types of physical activity they'll want to continue at the conclusion of the program. Healthy cooking demonstrations will also be offered. This program is free to participants and is open to women of all ages and is made possible through grants, sponsorships, and donations. Examples of these donations are being displayed by Ivonda Thomas, a yoga mat, and we have a blanket from one of our hospital sponsors. If you or someone you know is interested in participating, please visit cityofevanston.org/wow. Pre-registration was opened on March 5 and will close by the end of the day tomorrow, March 23. If you are unable to preregister via the Internet, please call the department at 847-328-2100 (extension 2498). Staff will be available to register you and your team. The kickoff event and orientation will take place Saturday, March 27, at 9:00 a.m. at Evanston Township High School's auditorium. Persons who are interested in volunteering for the WOW initiative should also contact 847-328-2100 (extension 2498) or send an email to wow@cityofevanston.org. Thank you.
And we have just a few examples of what was given out last year, so we will check that out. That concludes our information. And come out and join us and be a woman out walking.
Thank you, Ivonda. Our next presentation, changing subjects, is an update regarding our trash and yard waste collection program changes. As you know, with the council's approval, we're now moving forward implementing those changes. Suzette Robinson, our interim director of public works, is here with an update.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members, and City Manager. I just wanted to go over and remind everybody what the new fees that will be going into effect for sanitation. The new prices will go into effect April 1, 2010, and they will show up on the water bill that will be mailed out May 1. All residents that have a 95-gallon refuse cart, which is the existing size that you currently have, will be charged, a sanitation service charge, of $10.95. That's per unit per month. And if you can reduce, if you don't generate that much refuse, and you can reduce down to a 65-gallon container, you can continue to pay the $6.95 per household per month that you currently pay for the sanitation service charge. If you would like a smaller cart, you can call Streets and Sanitation at 847-866-2940 to request the smaller cart, or you can email us through the website to the Public Works Department. Yard waste collection fees are going into effect beginning April 5, which is the beginning of yard waste season. All yard waste must either be in a City of Evanston yard waste cart or in brown paper bags with a sticker attached to it. The stickers cost $1.75, and they are available at Jewel, Osco, the city collector's office, and Whole Foods. The yard waste, the charge for collection from the yard waste cart will be $25 per cart, and that's an annual fee that will be charged to the water bill July 1. Bags without stickers will be subject to a special pickup fee of $25 for the first three bags and $10 for each three additional bags. So what we will do is put an orange sticker on bags that don't have stickers the first week to give people an opportunity to adhere to the non-compliant sticker. And if they don't, then the next week when we collect, we will actually collect, remove the debris, and we'll charge. And street sweeping begins April 1, 2010, as well. So all the signs will be posted and...once we figure out the schedule, which we will decide later on this evening.
Alderman Fisk has a question.
Yes, thanks, Suzette. For those people who have yard waste, who have purchased yard waste, city yard waste containers, and if they overflow those, do their paper bags also need to have stickers on them?
Yes, they do.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. I have a question about the notice. One of my residents was concerned about the notice of the changes to these. Will it go out on the water bill very soon? How else are we publicizing the changes to our service fees besides the e-newsletter and press releases and articles in local papers? How will we reach individual homes with the notice?
Once we decide the street sweeping schedule, we will actually distribute a flyer that will go to each home, be mailed to each home, that will contain the street sweeping schedule and the additional fees. You know, in situations with, you know, me sharing the information now, and also, we have gotten quite a few phone calls. The advertisement, each time that information goes out, the number of calls goes up considerably. So I think people are getting the message, you know, asking the questions, et cetera.
And how quickly will residents who want to opt for the smaller refuse cart, the 65-gallon, how quickly can we turn over and exchange out those carts so that they're not being charged the $10.95, rather, the $6.95?
We have a list of about 200 residents that have requested the 65-gallon cart, and we plan to start distributing those the end of the week. Once we clear that, we will be free to do it within 48 hours to make the change over.
And my last question, if you don't mind, is how do residents, how will you know that a resident has opted in to the $25 fee for the yard waste cart?
Well, we're going to wait until May, and we're going to actually go out, and as a part of the collection route, we're going to record addresses of the carts that are already, of the carts that are in the system and currently being used. And then those addresses will be charged, the $25 fee, based on the number of carts that they have at their address.
So it'll become part of the city's database?
Yes.
That you use them for the billing? Thank you.
Alderman Tindham?
My question is a follow-up to that one. If you are in the database, I guess you're not automatically charged. Just, I do have a waste can, a yard waste can, haven't used it in a long time. It just sits in my yard. If they...am I right in guessing that if they don't see it at the curb, I will never be responsible for this $25?
That's correct. So we...
Comes up at a council meeting, of course.
If I'd like to, I don't use it, just if I would like to turn it in, what's...
Yes, we can come collect it if you want to turn it in, but we do not. We have a database of the yard waste carts that people purchase. We're not using that. We're using what we physically see out on the street.
Next, in the midst of all of this, we also have the census. And community members should have already received their census form. This is an important exercise for many reasons. Craig Scolar from our Planning Division has been our fearless staff member coordinating efforts citywide, working with the United States Census Bureau. The time is now, and Craig is here with an update.
Good evening. The last time I spoke with you was more about the importance of the census. And again, I want to reiterate a few of those things. First is $980 per resident that fills out the form. It's $980 per year that the city sees in direct and indirect funding from the census itself. Over $400 billion of federal government money... Over $400 billion of federal government money is distributed based off of the census data that is collected. Also, elected official representation, lines will be redrawn based off of where people are living this year. Those, I think, are the two major important items that we need to reiterate to all of our residents here in the City of Evanston. Starting new here, last Friday, March 19th through April 19th, we have a series of questionnaire assistance centers. If you have received your form and you have questions about it, or if you need assistance filling it out itself, there will be census staff members at six locations within the City of Evanston, one right here in the Civic Center, one in Fleetwood Jordane, one in the Robert Crown Center, one at the Vet Center on Howard Street, one at St. Nick's Church, and one at Northwestern University's Norris Center. Hours are posted online at cityofevanston.org/2010census. They are approximately 15 hours per week, per location, so the hours range from 9:00 to noon in the morning, all the way to 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. in some locations as well. And then lastly, the Downtown Evanston and Northwestern University, in partnership with the City of Evanston, has been working on a community savings census event, April 9th through 12th, or 9th through the 11th. If you go to downtownevanston.org and look under the What's New section, there's a flyer. You print off the flyer, bring it to the businesses that are participating in Downtown Evanston as a way to celebrate the census in 2010.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, Mr. Sklar. My question is, I think you said every person who fills out the form accounts for 900-some dollars to the City of Evanston. I think it's every human being counted on a census form.
Yes, ma'am, you are correct.
So count everyone in your household?
Yes.
Thank you. And, Madam Mayor, one additional item we'd like to mention, our Sustainability Office is helping co-sponsor a international event this Saturday, Earth Hour. And Earth Hour is Saturday, March 27th, from 8:30 to 9:30 p.m., and it is happening all over the world. We are one of about 30 communities in the state of Illinois who have committed to this, and what Earth Hour is, is a commitment to turn off your lights for an hour, and to bring attention to climate and sustainability initiatives around the world. We, believe it or not, are going to turn the lights off of this building. We have figured it out, we have found the switch, and we are going to, we are going to turn the lights off of this building, as well as all of our other public buildings in the City of Evanston. Clearly, our 911 communications center will be able to see the screens, and police officers, firefighters, as necessary, but all other buildings, all outdoor lights, as part of our efforts, and we call on all residents of the City of Evanston to join with us this Saturday evening, March 27th, from 8:30 to 9:30 to observe Earth Hour. And, Madam Mayor, that concludes my announcements.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications?
No communications, a nightmare, Madam Mayor.
All right, that brings us City Manager. Do you have an efficient and effective special business?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we have this evening updates on two of the City Council's goals, and the first is regarding the council's goals on efficiency and effectiveness of service. As you know, I've asked Joe McCray, the Assistant to the City Manager, to take on an additional assignment as the city's Chief Customer Officer, to begin a year-long project to bring a 311 telephone information system here to the city, as well as to look comprehensively at what we're doing, both internally, communicating with our residents, and externally, how residents communicate with us. We have a PowerPoint presentation, perhaps, if not, we're handing out the hard copy, and I'm sure that Mr. McCray can speak to the hard copy if we're not able to get the technology to work, so. In the interest of time, I think, we'll just ask Mr. McCray to talk from the hard copy. It's not a long presentation. Mr. McCray, good evening.
Good evening, City Council, Madam Mayor, Mr. City Manager. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this afternoon. You'll find that you, coming on right now, is my PowerPoint presentation, which was really good for all of you in the audience that won't get a chance to see it, I'll make it available on the website. At least, I thought it was good, you all may not be so.
Put it on the website, Joe.
But I will attempt to summarize for everyone here in the audience and council what it was that I had in the presentation. Here to talk to you about customer service initiatives for the City of Evanston, as the City Manager spoke about, we're gonna be taking on a number of different projects this year, and I'm gonna be heading up those activities, so I wanted to just give you all a broad overview of that, touch on some of the highlights for now. Suddenly, there'll be more details to follow, more specifics. This whole piece is centered around the idea of 360, 360 degrees of communication, and what that is, is improving customer service by streamlining how the city communicates with residents and how our residents communicate with us. This idea was founded in Somerville, Massachusetts, which is the city which we're using as our benchmark, they have a 311 system, and they've kind of centralized all their communication efforts in an effort to improve customer service with their residents. So making communication with residents simpler, making communication from the city to residents simpler, and making communication from residents to us simpler is the goal. Our efforts to improve customer service will include an assessment of our current customer service activities, basically how we do things, what are the opportunities for improvement. We'll work with departments to improve efficiency and accountability. We'll utilize technology such as our customer service request system, of which we have a couple. For members of the council, you're probably familiar with our IT BPAT service system, which is a work order system. We're gonna utilize a system such as that to kind of streamline and make our efforts more efficient and effective. If you will.
It's good customer service.
Thank you very much. If you would, hit the lights on, please. So that's where we were, utilizing technology to improve our customer service, in particular, our staff responsiveness. In terms of incoming communications and our efforts to improve those, as the City Manager spoke to, the big project we're gonna undertake is to develop a 311 customer call center. Right now, in the short term, we're gonna evaluate how departments are handling the call volume that comes in currently for our non-emergency calls, and that's specifically what this center is gonna focus in on, those non-emergency calls for service. Creating a 311 center will allow us to have one number for residents to contact for all non-emergency city services, similar to the way they do for 911 services. And our target date to go live with this project is March 1, 2011, or 3111. I can't take credit for that, that was City Manager. Improve outgoing communications. We're gonna be utilizing, as you all have seen, our social networking activities, Facebook, Twitter, blog, YouTube, and e-news. Those items have all been in place, with the exception of e-news, in place since the fall, particularly in the September. Those numbers represent the number of peoples we have either following us, or fans of our page, or individuals that receive our e-newsletter. We're gonna continue to reach out to our larger metro media outlet, larger metro media market with our free earned media, our press releases, our media advisories, so on and so forth. You've probably seen our efforts to improve our press releases and the way they look, and the materials that we cover in them. We're gonna improve our print materials, and also centralize our database. So throughout our departments, we have a number of different contacts for different demographics throughout the community. Our goal in this initiative is to centralize that database, have catalogs of different demographics, and then to target our outreach to residents accordingly, depending on what's there. And improving the visibility of our city brand throughout the city and on all our materials that we send out. Improving outgoing communications also includes improving signage throughout the city. One example would be the Civic Center, improving the office signs here and having wayfinder signs, directories in this building, to improve the way customers can find the services that they're looking for in person. We're gonna better utilize our City Channel 16 with PSAs and monthly programs, one focused on public safety, the other on a current event that's going on in the city. We're gonna extend our bilingual communications efforts throughout the city, specifically focusing on our Spanish community, Spanish-speaking community, their media outreach, and also having individuals on staff that can reach out to that demographic as well. We're fortunate in the City Manager's office to have two individuals that are fluent in Spanish, both our Community Information Coordinator, Eric Palmer, and our Community Information Specialist, Adelita Hernandez. So we're gonna take advantage of those skill sets and reach out to that community better. We're also gonna obtain an emergency alert notification system, more commonly known as reverse 911. In an effort to improve communications, we're gonna be more proactive in how we inform residents when there's an emergency, such as the frazzle ice issue that happened last year, and other items as such. So this would allow us to contact residents in the ways that they would prefer to be contacted, via email, via text, via phone. They will be able to sign up for the service from our website, and we will be able to contact them in a method that's most efficient and effective for them. And then we're also gonna work with departments to get newsworthy items out with greater frequency. And that concludes my report. Questions?
Alderman John Baptiste?
Thank you very much, Joe. Yes, thank you. What is the implication of this initiative on staffing? Because it seems to me that to be able to be efficient in communicating and outreach, there's gotta be, I mean, we need people to do that. Are you going to be the only one doing that? Maybe it's the city managers?
No, no, no.
Madam Mayor, Alderman, John Baptiste, we have lots of people who do this currently for us, in multiple departments around the city, and what we plan to do over the next year is evaluate how we can bring those folks together into one operation, so that there's a single point of contact for all of our non-emergency inquiries. We have people who answer the phone at our central business desk, as people walk in the building, there are individuals who answer those phones, those employees have been shifted over to Joe's responsibility now. We have folks, of course, that answer phones in Public Works, Community Development, there's non-emergency phone answering done at the Police Department for Police and Fire, the library handles inquiries. So when you add up all of the folks that we currently have answering questions scattered around the organization, that's a fairly substantial number of folks. So what we're gonna try to do with this is come up with a team that makes sense, use technology where as appropriate. Our goal is to do all of this without any additional cost to the city, and reallocate resources that we're currently using. So we're going to spend the next several months working on that when we come to you with a budget for 2011. We plan to have that all included there. So Joe's responsibility now, over the next several months, is to put that team in place, come up with the financing associated with the needs that we have. As you mentioned, the request tracking system, we actually own three of them, so we're gonna settle on one, and use one versus the three that we currently own, and hopefully there'll be some cost savings there by settling on one versus three. The telephone issues are pretty straightforward, we have already contacted AT&amp;T regarding the 311 number itself, so there's some technology work that needs to be done there. We also have to work with other phone providers in the community, so for example Comcast offers telephone service, so we're in touch with them, making sure this all happens. So over the course of the next eight, nine months, Mr. McCray's gonna have his hands full.
Great. And in addition, I know that we're on the cutting edge of technology with the Google initiative and everything, but what about old-fashioned radio? Do we still have that radio station?
We do have that radio station, Alderman John Baptiste, and I've asked Mr. McCray to move it, because right now it doesn't get the reach that it could, because it's located on top of the service center, next door. So we're looking at moving it as high up as we can, looking at some of our partner organizations around the community that have buildings that are more than two stories high.
Right.
So that's a key component of this, not only the Internet, but also a print media radio, using Channel 16, because not everybody is Google-friendly, and we recognize that, and we want to make sure that the City of Evanston can reach out to all members of our community, however they choose to communicate.
Good. Lastly, you know, the Latino community certainly is probably the most visible ethnic group, language group, but we have other language groups, ethnic groups in the community.
Thank you for bringing that up, Alderman.
And I think that we've talked about it, at the time that we had a Spanish ombudsman, and then we changed the job description to be someone who interfaces with all of the other groups in the city, but can you please consider how we might outreach to these groups as well?
Absolutely.
And again, I'm happy you brought this up, because in Mr. McCray's, the early days of his new assignment discovered that we had let our contract lapse with AT&amp;T for their language service. So we discovered over the last several years that we were only using it a handful of times per year.
Very minimal.
And that is a service, which I know you know, Alderman John Baptiste, for the benefit of the public, that it's really one touch that puts you in access with over 200 languages. So we have reconstituted that contract, it's not a very expensive issue, you pay as you use. So we have put that, or are in the process of putting that back into place.
We're currently in the process.
So we will have access to over 200 languages, and we will let employees know, as they encounter individuals that need assistance in a language other than English and Spanish, which we have people on site, that they'll have easy access to that, so that we can, if they're calling on the phone, either have a three-way conference call, or if they're at a public counter, make that easy access, so we can communicate, hopefully in any language of any resident or visitor in Evanston.
Good.
Thank you.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, Mr. Bob Kowitz and Mr. McCray. My question, an important component of this 360-degree communication for me is the feedback mechanism that we would get from those whom we're looking to serve, and how do we know from them that we are indeed accountable and responsive to their requests? Will there be something built into the system so that we can understand if we've been responsive?
Right. I think what we're gonna, what we're going to do to set a baseline for this is look into potentially a community survey, some type of electronic survey, to see what the standards are now, and we're, going forward, when we get all this together, we're gonna set performance measures of standards, estimated times for service to be fulfilled, required, et cetera, et cetera, and I think that builds in more accountability, that allows residents to know that when you call in with this type of a service request, it will be resolved in this number of days, barring any type of extenuating circumstances, and if not, the system that we would have in place, those work order systems, kick that request up the chain of command, to make sure that they're being addressed in a timely fashion. So it gives us the ability to be more accountable, it gives us the ability to be more responsive, it gives us the ability to be more responsible for all the items that are-
So will we be doing customer service surveys at the beginning of this and in the midst of it, so that we can see whether or not it's making a difference?
I think it would be good to do one at the beginning, and then also, after we get it up and running, to see comparatively-
On a continuing basis?
Right, on a continuing basis, how we're doing, and to what extent we need to do improvement.
Thank you.
And Alderman Grover, members of the council, we get constant feedback already. We have multiple email addresses, we follow comments people make on our Facebook site, people Twitter comments back to us. Certainly many of you have electronic bulletin boards, have listservs that you're getting comments, and what we also want to make sure is that we have a single point for processing all that information, so it's not a matter of someone saying, "I saw this here." We want to put systems in place that we'll see it first, and I think we'll be talking more with you about the best ways to do that, but certainly Twitter and Facebook are already places that we get a lot of feedback from residents already, and have over 30 what we call generic email addresses, and we're making sure that all of those are being monitored, and we will probably get rid of some of them, against that there's a more central point for that email communication as well.
Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor and Joe, one of the things that really stands out about this for me is the fact that those who are not connected by computer with the 311 line will have immediate access to fixing their problems, and number two, the reverse 911, is another way to get information to people who don't have, because- have, because when people sign up, they can say, "Call me. That's how I want to be notified." So everybody will have an opportunity to get the kind of information they need. So I think that, I've always thought 311 was great and reverse 911. So you're thinking this will not be implemented until 2011 fiscal year?
Madam Mayor, Alderman Rainey, we're going to do what we can to have it in place by January. Again, one of the real issues is funding, and we want to make sure that we come up with a plan to the council, because our goal is to have no additional cost to the taxpayers of Evanston to do this. So it's going to take us a few months to get that all put together. I think there are component parts of this certainly that we would like to move forward with, the reverse 911. Unfortunately, I think we're pretty far behind other communities in Northern Illinois on that. I think you'd be hard-pressed to find another community in the immediate area that doesn't currently do that. So we're looking to implement that probably sooner than March 1. But we think that, you know, the advertising push of this to have people put aside any other phone number they have for us, non-emergency, go to 311. The March 1, 2011 is just a little bit too good to pass up. So we'll balance that out as we move forward. And again, our plans are really to have it up and running January 1st.
Seeing no more lights. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, our second update on a city council goal this evening is affordable housing. As the council may recall, you had a special meeting back toward the end of the year to receive the report of the Affordable Housing Task Force. And at that time, you asked staff to review that task force and come up with a work plan for implementation. Levan Walker, our Community and Economic Development Director, is here. And there's a document before you, and I'll ask Mr. Walker to come forward and walk you through that document.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. You have before you the Affordable Housing Strategy and Work Plan for 2010-11. Essentially, what staff has done is identify very specific steps, some that are ongoing, some that are new programmatic initiatives, and other areas that are very specific in terms of us taking steps to achieve the objectives of affordable housing for the City of Evanston. Are there any specific questions? I will answer them.
Alderman Rainey? I'm sorry, Lionel, your light didn't go on first.
I'm just asking for a presentation.
Okay.
I think that while we have it, our audience, you know, the rest of the community has not had access to it. So it would be good if you could present it.
Okay, Alderman John Baptiste. Essentially, what we've done is identify priority programmatic areas for the Affordable Housing Strategy and Work Plan for the coming year. The various steps, the first one is to implement the neighborhood stabilization program to secure the acquisition of the 100 foreclosed housing units in the census tracts. This is essentially implementing the NSP 2 $18 million grant. Those would be the priority programmatic areas for numbers one, two, and three of the strategy before council. Number four, we would essentially continue with the down payment assistance program for households with incomes under 100% of area median income. We would also maintain the foreclosure prevention partnership, offering HUD certified counseling through Interfaith Housing. We would administer the homeless prevention and rapid rehousing program, which has allocated funds to the cities for the past three years. We would continue to monitor and analyze foreclosure data. A council now is receiving a monthly report from staff on foreclosures. We are going to continue sponsoring training workshops for condo owners and associations. We will offer a single-family owner occupied and multifamily rental rehab programs through the revolving loan funds. And those are going to be ongoing activities that staff will be engaged in. With respect to new programmatic initiatives under review, we're in the process now of designing a strategy to leverage private sector funding and home funds in vacant foreclosed housing outside the target areas. That was a question that came up in the Planning and Development Committee as to whether we would be looking at other areas of the city other than those census tracts affected by the NSP 2 grant. The answer to that is that we are. Also looking at developing a rental rehab program for council consideration using home funds for those non-areas as well, the non-NSP 2 targeted areas. We intend to work with Habitat for Humanity to provide suitable housing options. Also to review the operations of the Chodos. One of the questions that came up in the Planning and Development Committee as well revolved around the future of Chodos. I indicated to the members of the client commission that is, in my view, that we have too many Chodos in the City of Evanston, and that we need to evaluate their operation and take a look at the possible consolidation so we end up with perhaps one or two efficient management units to provide that service. Also, kind of the umbrella of exploring opportunities to use a home program funds more effectively. Also, ongoing supportive services would be to continue sustaining housing-related services through intermediaries such as foreclosure prevention counseling, homeownership education, and management information systems for Evanston Alliance on homelessness. Under the section entitled Administration and Evaluation, we're looking at evaluating the ongoing families in transition rental subsidy program and developing recommendations for program revisions, evaluating the performance of down payment assistance programs, redeveloping the housing webpage on the city website. We'd be looking at doing that earlier than October 2010. Securing a HUD commitment to fund an outside consultant to analyze the capacity of the Chodos, as I indicated earlier. Also to evaluate the inclusionary housing ordinance's impact. And the last one is to periodically review criteria and guidelines pertaining to affordable retention, income limits, and subsidy amounts for projects funded through the home program and through the city's Affordable Housing Fund to adjust changes in the market conditions and customer need. And that essentially, Madam Mayor, members of council comprises the strategy and work plan for the coming year.
Thank you. Seeing no lights, I do have one question. Could you walk me through a little bit how we're going to reach out to the community and explain to them that this housing is available and help them to figure out how to apply for it?
We've started some of that already, Madam Mayor, through having community meetings in the awards that have been affected by the NSP 2 program. We will also develop some publications and use the city's website effectively where we can to ensure that the residents of Evanston are aware of the opportunities that exist in terms of the objectives that we've articulated here.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, unless there is any questions, we would ask, the requested action is that the council adopt this Affordable Housing Strategy and Work Plan for 2010-11.
Move adoption.
Second.
Alderman Rainey?
No, I just wanted to move adoption.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. It's been moved and seconded. Seeing no lights on for comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you.
Next is citizen comment. If everybody sticks to three minutes, we will just barely have enough time. And please, if someone has already said what you want to say, just say you agree with the previous speaker, and this will work out perfectly. I'm going to call the first four people. If you'll come up in line over there and just speak after the speaker in front of you is finished. Warren Walker, Alex Arzumandis, David Charney, and William Wangard. What? Mickey Three. Mickey, we're not, I'll call you. We're not there yet. I do have you down. I do have you down. If you'd just step up and give your name and address.
Hello, my name is Warren Walker with Atmosphere Communications at 820 Davis Street. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Technology Innovation Center and their requirements for funding. I would like to speak as a small businessman who has been a part of that organization now, and as my business has continued to grow, and how valuable they have been to me. We all know about the economic downturn that has hit this country, and I must say, without their support, I might have gone under as a small business. But because they are there and they have the savvy and technical expertise and ability to help a small business grow, they have helped me sustain my business, and that is why I am still here today. To that point, I would like to say that currently, as a business, we actually employ four full-time people, three part-time business, and we continue to hope that growth will continue for the rest of this year. So this funding will help them continue with that kind of process, with building companies, bringing businesses here to Evanston, and helping them see them grow and continue on. And so that's why I'm here to support them. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Alex Arzumandis. I'm also at the incubator with Warren Walker at 820 Davis Street, and the company is called Silotech. And we, I have to say that the incubator itself, very much in support of it, without the incubator, I would venture to say that not only would I not be in Evanston, but I suspect that my company also wouldn't have gotten made it through the recession. And we see ourselves also as a growing company and interested in staying in Evanston, but a big part of that is because of the incubator. So that's all I wanted to say and all I wanted to add to what Warren just said.
Thank you very much. Alderman Rainey.
Could the speakers tell us what the nature of their business is?
Sure. The nature of Silotech is instrumentation, mechanical instrumentation. It's a high-technology company. The technology enables, in certain markets, completely new ways of doing businesses. Has a lot of room, well, in my view anyway, and that's why I'm doing it, a lot of room for significant growth.
Thank you.
Atmosphere Communications is an internet service provider. We provide internet services to a number of businesses in multi-dwelling unit, multi-tenant units within the Evanston area. We also provide IT consulting to a number of small to medium-sized businesses here in the Evanston area as well.
Thank you.
Did you send your nomination in for us to be a Google community?
Those meetings every Tuesday.
He's been very good about that.
My name is David Charney with Illuman Group, also at 820. And I want to talk a little bit about, we also would not be in Evanston if it were not for the incubator. I'm actually from Indiana, and I didn't even know what an Evanston was until we got to know the incubator, got to know its creativity, its innovation. The incubator also has plenty of networking events and a few events where you can really meet some professionals and get to know how to grow a small business. And unfortunately, there's not too many of them, and that's one of the things we hope to get more and more of those from these. And we also have four employees now, or four people working all together all the time. And what Illuman does is we create a lot of interactive training, learning, and marketing applications. So we use 3D animation and video and interactivity to do everything from train surgeons on how to do medical procedures to train baristas on how to make iced coffees. So that's a little bit about what we do. So thank you.
Thank you.
William Wangard here. I started a company called Ingrana LLC in last June, and I didn't really get off the ground successfully until December, when I moved into the Innovation Center. The nature of my business is I do computational fluid dynamic analysis, and it's, I serve as mainly a consultant for various local, but medium, well, large-sized companies. Due to the downturn, a lot of companies bigger and even medium-sized are laying off, and so they still need product development and innovation. So they're looking towards people to help rescue them. The Innovation Center helps me because it provides a very healthy working environment as opposed to working out of my living room, which was not as good. There's very good services there, such as conferencing, a very nice office, and it makes me look like a better, more professional person for my clients. And there's a lot of small embryonic-sized companies that are trying to grow and trying to succeed, and we're all sort of working and struggling together to try to figure out how to make it. And what I'm hoping for with this funding, we could, at least my particular goal, would be to understand better how to, once I get to past the stage where I can start hiring people and move out of the Innovation Center, how could I stay in Evanston and what's involved in staying in Evanston? And so if you could provide a mechanism for helping us understand what's involved in all the things that we don't know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Susan Monroe and Jeff Smith, Betty Esther. Don't worry.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Susan Monroe, 1316 Maple, and Chair of the Evanston Affordable Housing Task Force. And I am speaking to the Affordable Housing Implementation Plan tonight. And I was excited to see that the staff has made this good start. We're very fortunate to have the NSP money to get us off. I was somewhat disappointed that we didn't have a more fleshed-out implementation plan. Mr. Walker has said these are steps, they're really kind of activities that are not necessarily related or that they don't necessarily build on one another. Most of the ones under the ongoing priority programmatic areas are already happening. They're not new initiatives. I'm delighted to hear that there is a strategy coming to leverage the private sector funding and home funds in vacant foreclosed housing outside NSP 2 target areas, but this doesn't really tell us much here. The task force also is interested in having some commitment that some of those units would be rental units, because we did see a need to shift some of the home funds from the production of units for homeownership to rental needs. I was disappointed to see that there really wasn't anything on rentals, which was our highest priority coming out of the task force. It is good to see that there are going to be an increase in the number of rental, in the rental rehab program that's coming, but this doesn't really address the problem of the gap between rental houses and what low and moderate income people can pay. We had recommended increasing families in transition. Revising the administration so that families aren't approved one at a time would be a good step and a facilitating step, but it doesn't really increase the program. We'd also advise creating a rent subsidy program, and that's something that's going to require creativity and bringing a lot of people together and looking at best practices in other places. I think I would love to see staff starting on that right away because it won't be easy to craft something that works for Evanston with its high-priced housing. Regarding the Chodos, they're addressed in two places under reviewing their operations and then securing the HUD commitment to analyze their capacity and capability. I think this is an extremely important activity. We do need the Chodos. I can't say that we need all of them. I tend to agree with Mr. Walker on that point. But I think that we now have these activities assigned towards late in 2010. We really need to get started on that. It was my understanding that it's not hard to get a HUD person to come and start that analysis, but I didn't really know whether this was to be finished.
Susan, I need you to wrap up. Sorry.
Okay, very close. The website, I hope you'll get that going right away, the webpage, because that was a big complaint, and I think this fits with the city's other efforts in customer service to make that more transparent and available to people. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Jeff Smith of 2724 Harrison, and it's because I live on that street that I want to comment on item P1, because on my block alone, there are two houses that were professionally marketed by good real estate brokers, both of which took considerably longer to sell than the house of the Citizens Lighthouse Community Land Trust, and both of which took hits from their asking price considerably more than what the Citizens Lighthouse Community Land Trust had to reduce its asking price by. And all around town, all around Chicagoland, we've seen all sorts of projects that ran into trouble, and I'm asking that this council agree with the Housing Commission that the request for additional funds, one additional funding for the first project of the land trust be approved, contrary to the recommendations of staff, because to deny that request serves no real purpose, whereas to agree with the request and grant it serves the purpose for which the land trust was created. The context here is that when this house came on the market, the housing market was not yet in freefall, and nobody can dispute that it was competitively priced, but we were already hemorrhaging jobs at a rate we haven't seen in a long time, and we were in a credit crisis, which nobody has spoken about. And nobody found themselves more unable to get credit than the target demographic for a house like this. The universe of qualified, low-income, working buyers who could get a loan and felt secure in their jobs was almost nil at that point in time. So to speak of rewarding the land trust somehow for bad management makes no sense. First of all, reward makes no sense, because nobody's going to personally profit here. To deny the request, on the contrary, undermines and devalues the efforts of people, including people who are no longer on the board, and the people who have given contributions hard-earned from this community to try and work for affordable housing here. With regard to management of the project, I haven't heard a single iota of detail from staff or anybody else saying that the nails cost too much, or that we shouldn't have replaced the rotten joists, or that we shouldn't have gotten the squirrels out of the wall, or that the carpentry underneath the tile shouldn't have been done. All those were debated, just as you would debate it with your spouse or your partner in your own home, over your own gutters. I didn't intend to spend hours of my life talking about the gutters on this house, but when they filled with water and they froze, they had to be replaced. The real cost here is not an overrun, but what we'd call, if it was an AIA contract, a scope change. The additional taxes and interest are the reason that we're here, again, because of the economic devastation. And this project coming online, the land trust's first project, at the worst time to do so in 75 years. The staff has said that it's not a sustainable model, and they don't want to set a precedent. I would agree, we don't want to set this precedent. I don't want to see what we've gone through ever happen again, but let's look at what's happened. All around town, for-profit developments, and I could name names, you know the streets, Green Bay, Chicago, Emerson, et cetera, have had models that none of us would call sustainable. What this city has done, what this council has done time after time, is to grant exceptions and extensions so that we don't quote "punish" unquote developers. So why should we punish a not-for-profit organization or its contributors or the people who believe in it? Because what we've done here is what these funds are available for. We fixed up a home. We took it out of foreclosure. We stabilized the neighborhood. We created value. We created employment for job, we put people to work, many of them in Evanston, working on this, and we put a family in a home, a family that will be counted on the census, and that's what it's about. So I'm asking the members of the council who were not here for PND, Alderman Burris, Alderman Tennant, Alderman Grover, Alderman Fisk, to vote to approve the funds, and those of you on PND who voted against it, I ask you, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Holmes, to find it in your hearts to use these funds for what they're intended for. Thank you.
Thank you. But, oh, there you are.
My name is Betty Esther. I stay at 21, I stay at 2031 Church Street, excuse me. I'm here to speak on SP II. Today, what I heard was we doing Google, we doing everything so we can see and keep hearing this word of transparent. At a community meeting and at other meetings, we asked to, where's the plan? Is it on the website? Can we see this plan for NSP II? We got, the initial plan did go up in, after we asked and asked, and it came up online late, but it did come up. Now we have a strategy plan. Here we have $600,000 that are going to be approved tonight. That did not go to the Housing Commission for them to talk about it, nor to the community say, this is what we are going to use this fund for. The word transparent in this city, to me, personally, and what it's saying is, we not going to show you. You put online March the 15th, an impact study, but you just said, this is what we're going to submit to HUD, we're going to submit the impact study, these are the regulation and everything, and if you want to speak against this, this is the regulation you have to speak on. But the actual study, what they looked at, what they found out about the noise and stuff, was not made available. So how is the community supposed to speak on something when they do not have that information? Tonight, Mr. Walker gave, outlined for the housing plan. I haven't seen it. We saw the Housing Commission Task Force, we saw what they did, we could speak on it, and what Susan had said is true. But the community is not seeing these things. The community voice is not being heard, because the community is being denied access. That's what is happening to us. The word transparent is mean, the community, you don't see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mickey Tree and Irene Gregory. You want to use that mic?
Thank you. Yes. Will you just pass this around? This is pertinent, and pass this around as pertinent for a reason of... Just pass it around, please, for the reason of something to look good at. I'm gonna make, I'm gonna get this close to quick, I'm gonna quick, get this as close as quick, three minutes as I can. Hello to our Honorary Mayor, Ms. Elizabeth Tisdale, and the entire esteemed group of city council members who have always worked synergistically in keeping the city of Evanston's unique community family that has grown from the links of the Underground Railroad, special chain of God's creation. I've driven back here to my home, Evanston, Illinois, from where I currently reside in Gurnee, Illinois, to try to encourage you all to rescind some of the tight rules regarding handicapped people whom I heard mentioned today from a gentleman, and I appreciate that. Handicapped people whom I've grown as a puzzle piece of. I'm asking the city to rescind, rather than to further punish working efforts of us handicapped individuals who want to work, we desire to work, rather than to keep in place a formed by muscle or mental memory, the using of these cupped-hand formations, such as begging, busy people walking down the street for their hard-earned cash donations, rather than to keep our self-esteem. I'm petitioning the city to close, to take a close look at that, which we're doing in actuality. We're putting the noose around the neck of people who are trying to work with our talents. One of my talents is I used to be a professional woman's hairstylist. I did that for 40-plus years. I don't want to tell the rest of women don't, and I've been working with women, so I ain't going to do it either. So I chose, I chose to start inventing hair tools. I go to, I do the breadboard protos myself, prototypes myself. I make them in working fashion, then I take them on further down to prototype companies, then I go to my injection, plastic injection mold designer, and then I go to China, and I spend two weeks there inspecting the colors and tools and the flexibility and the strength of these tools that I'm representing in my industry. I've created a lot of inventions that you see every day in your beauty salon, such as that, that push little cart that keeps your curling irons. I'm the inventor of that. I'm the inventor of the scissor bag. At the time I invented it, it was called the Mickey Three Hit Kit. Some of you may have heard that. I've been a...
Mickey, I apologize, but I need you to wrap it up, because we each get three.
Anyway, I'm asking you, thank you, thank you, and also, also thank you for calling me. I'm asking you to rescind some of these rules and let me go to work on the street corners and not spend just a half hour setting up that it takes me to set up to be at that one individual place. I'm asking the city to allow me to stay a lengthy time, at least an hour and a half in any, any place in Evanston, to sell the goods that I have honestly put together with my own hands, that God has given me the creation, the creativity to make, and I'll end it right there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Irene Gregory. I live at 1900 Sherman Avenue, Evanston. At a previous meeting, Mr. Bob Kowitz gave me his card and said, "Call me," and I did. And we had a wonderful meeting, and I'm really here to share with you that I found that he was very, very sympathetic about the library situation, and he had wonderful ideas, potentially to expand the services and serve more people and do it in a better way. All of this, of course, is subject to the approval of the city council, but I wanted to share with you how excited I was about meeting with him and his ideas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes citizen comment. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First item is approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of March 8, the minutes of the special city council meeting of March 11. Next, we have requests by Administration Public Works that the council approve the city of Evanston payroll through March 14 in the amount of $2,184,546.92. Then the city of Evanston bills through March 22nd, covered under the previous fiscal year budget, the amount of $965,108.60 through March 23rd, under this year's budget, 2010-11, the amount of $450,524.34. The next item is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Next item, A3.2, we request your approval of a contract for a 2010 cured-and-play spot mining contract with CTR Systems in the amount of $59,950. Next, we request your approval of the purchase of hot asphalt for potholes in the amount of, in the amount of $70,000, and this is through Orange Crush LLC on Oakden Street in Skokie. We request your approval also of contract purchase of janitorial supplies from Laporte Inc., which is a bid acquired through the Northwest Municipal Conference Suburban Purchasing Cooperative, an amount not to exceed $90,000 annually. We ask that you approve the 2010 special events calendar with one new event, and that is the Chicago North Shore Triathlon, still being reviewed by staff. Item A3.6 is the revision to the street sweeping program. I haven't had a request to take this off. Is it still, it is off, right. A3.6 is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Next is Resolution 21R10, which authorizes the NIPSTA membership and 2010 membership dues. This is through the Northeastern Illinois Public Safety Training Academy in the amount of $28,253 for training and other activities by the Fire Department and the Public Works Department. We request your approval of 23R10, which authorizes the manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Willmett for the Isabella, Isabella Street Emergency Repair Program in the amount of $415,000 through the State Emergency Resurfacing Program. Item A6 is Ordinance 19010 for introduction, the special assessment of alley paving project north of Lincoln Street, east of Eastwood Avenue. It is the northeast-west leg. That is for introduction. Next, planning and development. Item P1 is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Item P2 is a request from Planning and Development that you approve committing $600,000 in home funds to the NSP II program by an agreement with Brinshaw Development LLC. That's for action. P3 is approval of a grant agreement with the Illinois Historic Preservation Agency for the Evanston Lake Shore Historic District Survey. This is, the total cost is $17,200, but we have a grant, and we're just simply required to add $5,200. Next is Ordinance 18010, which is for introduction, which designates the properties located at 1724, 1728, 1730, and 1732 Chicago Avenue as the Women's Christian Temperance Union Evanston Historic District. Item P5 is Ordinance 17010, which is for action, granting a special use for a type-two restaurant at 1729 Sherman Avenue, known as Jimmy John's. This is for action. Under other committees, Madam Mayor, we have the facade improvement assistant request in the amount of $11,000 for Beals and Beals at 81618 Church Street through the Economic Development Fund. This is recommended by the Economic Development Committee. Item O2 is a recommendation by the Economic Development Committee to provide $80,000 in funding for the Evanston Community Development Corporation, with the funding provided $50,000 from the Evanston West, from the West Evanston TIF Increment Financing District and $30,000 from the Economic Development Fund. The Economic Development Committee also requests your approval of funding request in the amount of $100,000 for the Technology Innovation Center, requesting also that in, in exchange for this grant, the city will be granted a representative on the board after 90 days of, 90 days after the disbursement of the funds.
Alderman Rainey, could you remove that, please?
Off, take it off the... Off, take it off the agenda, yes. This item will be removed from the agenda and addressed by the committee chair. We have four appointments to the Arts Council, Laura Allison, to the Arts Council, Carolina Pfister, to the Arts Council, Billy Logan, and for the Mental Health Board, Darlene Edie Morris. Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. City Clerk, could we have a roll call vote on the consent agenda?
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the consent agenda passes. Alderman Rainey, could we have Administration and Public Works?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I ask you to refer to item A3.1, approval of a contract for the 2010 motor fuel tax street resurfacing program. This is an award to the fourth lowest bidder, A-LAMP Concrete Contractors. After the previous, the other three low bidders were disqualified, the award is in the amount of $1,282,412.10. I move approval. I'd like to address why it's off the consent agenda.
Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I am voting no on this contract because I believe that the work performed by this company is not of the quality and do not have the community behavior that's required for, for doing residential streets. This is in direct conflict with what our staff believes. They believe that this is a fine company and follows the standards set forth by the community, but I've had bad experiences, and therefore I will vote against it.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, it's been moved and seconded. City Clerk, could we have a roll call vote on approval of the contract for street resurfacing?
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
No.
Seven to two, the motion passes. Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, I just want to say that it is very important for aldermen who have street work under this contract in their wards. I, you know, there's the chart in here of what streets are going to be done in residential neighborhoods, for those aldermen to be vigilant, because I, I think it's very important that you see what I'm talking about.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey, do you have one more item from Administration and Public Works?
I do, I do. Sorry. The revision, oh gosh, the revisions to the street sweeping program. Madam Mayor and members of the council who are not part of Administration Public Works Committee, we have gone over this many, many times. Ms. Robinson has been absolutely very, very supportive of listening to people who have options to present to her in terms of this plan, but I think we've reached a point now where included in the documentation that we have are some of the exceptions to the new plan. The new plan involves, you know, every three weeks, streets will be, will be swept that were previously swept bi-weekly. One side of the street's sweeping is going to increase, so that'll be a plus. Other, like main routes, will remain the same, and I think it's, we've really come up with a workable plan, so I move approval.
Second. Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a couple additional requests of the council. In the sixth ward, there are two trouble spots that, particularly in the fall, where leaves accumulate, causing flooding and slippery conditions, and even toward the late fall, thick blocks of ice. The first one is Payne Street between McDaniel and Central Park. That's approximately three blocks. And the second is both Cowper and Hastings, the 2,400 block of those streets, which is adjacent to Bent Park, so it's simply taking that already existing, bi-monthly cleaning to another block on each street.
Alderman Rainey?
On page 126, are those streets not on that list?
They are not.
Oh, okay. Cowper and Hastings, no, but there are different parts of the street. I don't know.
It's, on Cowper and Hastings, we do double, twice monthly for the fact that it's a heavily-used park for soccer and other things. And then the two, the block south of that is a very frequently flooded block. It seems to take the rain off from the fact that we've improved Bent Park, and we've also had improvements on the area south of there. They seem to be taking a lot of the water from the area.
Ms. Robinson, did you want to respond?
Yes, Alderman Rainey, the, the first two streets on, on the page, Cowper and Hastings, between Central and Harrison, it would move from Central to Colfax, and Hastings from Central to Colfax. So we have no problem with that change, as well as the addition of Payne between McDaniel and Central Park Avenue. We could add those to the bi-weekly schedule without any problem.
Alderman Rainey?
All right, just so we can keep this chart accurate, I'd like to move to amend the program to include those in this. So they're 1As?
Yes, that's correct.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the revisions to the street sweeping program as amended. It's not an ordinance, and it's not money, so we will have a voice vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion passes.
Now I finish.
Does that conclude? Thank you, Alderman Rainey. And Alderman Nguyen, Planning and Development.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We have only one item off the agenda. That's P1, the request from Citizens Lighthouse Community Land Trust for an additional $20,000 subsidy for the rehab and sale of 2212 Washington. I move approval.
Second. Alderman Wilson?
I voted against this at the committee level, and of course, the intention is certainly not to punish the organization in any way, but my view from a policy perspective is that we undertook to live up to a commitment, and we have under, we have lived up to that commitment, but I don't believe that the city should necessarily be in the business of, of guaranteeing success for, for any particular organization. So for that primary reason, I don't, I personally can't support this, this request.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Yes. Madam Mayor, one of the, the problems that I have with those who want to vote no to this request is that it's really a departure from the city's general policy. If we want to create new policies as to how we manage, we help the Chodos do their business, how we advise them, if we want to set some limitations in terms of how much money we allocate to them to complete a particular project, I agree. Then the next time one of them come, comes before us, then we should hold them to the letter of the agreement. But the city has not had that kind of policy. It has an open policy. It sits down and sits, and advises the Chodos on each and every project. We have a particular project by the Citizens Lighthouse that was not very affordable in the final analysis, because when, after they purchased the property, they incurred additional costs to try to, to renovate the property. Then it took a long time for the property to sell because the economic atmosphere changed, and they have incurred so much cost that they had to borrow more money in order to sustain some of their obligations. So we are at the point right now where we are voting to do something, to depart from a policy, as opposed to trying to give the, the Director of Community Development some time to create a new policy to govern what we do. It is under the new policy that we need to try to be so strict in terms of the funds that, that we allocate to the Chodos when they come to request such funds. We have a home fund that's assigned to us. If we don't use it, it goes back. We have, there's no consequences to the city to give the $20,000 that this Chodo is requesting in order to continue to offset their debts that they've incurred in trying to achieve the objective that they set out, which was to turn a unit into an affordable house for a citizen of the City of Evanston, which they did. It cost them more than they thought it would cost. We are in a, in a different time period in terms of the economic atmosphere. I don't think it's time for us to make that kind of decision. We should call for a policy shift, which is what I think the Director is trying to do, but I don't think it's time for us to create a new approach and, and deprive this Chodo of the money that they're requesting.
Alderman Rainey?
I believe that this organization made a bad decision to begin with. I think they got bad counsel from our staff. I think they got inadequate support and direction from their hired staff, and when all is said and done, any one of us could provide affordable housing if we got 300-plus thousand dollars from outside sources and sold that house for 169,000. I mean, when you tell people who aren't part of this environment that story, they look at you like, what, are you crazy? 300-plus thousand dollars to, to provide housing, three-bedroom, one-bath unit for 169,000 can't be explained. It just makes no sense. And then on top of it, to tell people, oh, but it's only for the house, the land under it is, you know, it's a land trust. The whole thing is a problem. As Director Walker said during our planning and development meeting, just because we have money available doesn't mean we should misspend it, and I truly believe that. The farthest I would be willing to go to change my vote on this is to send them to the bank and have them come back with a letter from the bank explaining how the bank's going to restructure this loan. I asked during planning and development, this is all about a 20,000 unsecured loan. I asked, did you come to our staff and, and tell them you were going for this loan? What this loan is, is charging the balance, the, charging the payment on one credit card with another credit card. That's exactly a way you can look at what this 20,000 dollar loan is. Nobody knew, nobody knew that they were going for this loan. I asked how they thought they were going to pay for it. We were told that they thought the city would give them money to pay for it. I, I, I just don't think that this community, with the reputation that it has, ought to dig this hole any deeper. So if, if somebody wants to send them back to the bank and, and get a reorganization in this loan, I'd be willing to listen, but I'm voting no.
Alderman Burris?
Could we hear from the community development staff to clarify something that Alderman Jean Baptiste referred to about a, a policy shift? So what, and, and just want to go back to, to refer, to refer to what you're saying is, what was the policy change that when the, Lighthouse came in, did they think if they did a cost overrun, that they were going to be automatically given extra dollars? I, I'm just, need a clarification. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, through to Alder, um, Burris, I believe, and Alderman Jean Baptiste can clarify this, but I believe the policy change that he was talking about was in response to a question that he asked me during the committee, essentially in terms of my perspective that we have more Chodos than we need in the City of Evanston, and that we were looking at some possibility of reviewing their operations with the view of ultimately consolidating them into one or two rather than the number that we currently have, and also taking a look at the funding mechanism that we provide to the Chodos and developing some clear guidelines. Perhaps Alderman Baptiste, or Jean Baptiste, you could clarify that, but in terms of any specific policy change, I can't-
And maybe it's Dennis Marino who could come and talk about this, because initially, when these Chodos, every single one of them, they would consult with the staff about particular projects that they're doing. Everybody understood from the very beginning, the, the model that the Citizens Lighthouse was promoting, that is, you know, buy the home, buy the land, sell the home, hold the land, in order to try to transfer it in the future so that the owner of the home can transfer the house at an affordable cost. And I, I think that their expectation, and the expectation of staff, was that they would have been able to do it at an affordable rate, sell it fairly quickly, because it was projected to be under the market rate at that time. But by the time they got into it, and they were into economic difficulties due to the, the general atmosphere, then it became more difficult, there were some additional costs. So Dennis Marino and Donna Spicusa, and they counsel these Chodos as to whatever projects they're going through. They usually consult with them throughout the process, and the expectation is that they would come and present requests for additional funds to try to sustain the work of the Chodos, because that's, that's, this is what it's all about. We didn't create the Chodos to abandon them. We created them as a tool to try to get affordable housing on the market. Obviously, we're at a different place and time, when even the kind of affordable housing they're talking about is probably more expensive than what we have now. So we realized that. So I think Dennis Marino can talk about the interaction and the expectations to support the Chodos to go forward, and that the home funds that we get from the federal government is intended to be spent for the purposes that these Chodos are spending them. Some mistakes are being made, but I think that it is not for them to be, we shouldn't abandon them at this particular point in time, but we should try to see if we could create some departures that they understand and they expect. So if Dennis would talk about the approach, the historical approach with all these Chodos, it's been the same thing. They come back here and they request funds for marketing to, to assist them in trying to carry over obligations for as long as they can so they don't lose the housing, but that's, that's the model we have. And one individual mentioned during the course of the discussion, and I don't know who did, I think it was, it might have been Jeff who mentioned earlier. I mean, we do for private developer, we provide the kind of extension to make sure that they're able to survive. So if we are saying that we want to consolidate the Chodos, the Chodos are ineffective, then we need to make that declaration and then set forth some different processes that they need to follow in order to qualify for our support.
City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, as far as a policy shift goes, I think you probably need to look to me. When Mr. Walker was hired and, and he and I were reviewing this, this situation, I think what we tried to do was look at what had become really an unlimited checkbook for these projects. And again, I would agree with Alderman Jean Baptiste that that has been the council's past practice, that there has not been the scrutiny of, of the additional funds being put out there so the staff, Mr. Marino, Ms. Spicusa, and others have worked closely with them. I think, though, in talking with Mr. Walker- I think, though, in talking with Mr. Walker, looking at these individual projects, when you weigh the amount of money that the city has invested versus the value of the projects, the amount of money that we have expended, regardless of whose money it is, in my opinion, outweigh the value of the project. And so, certainly if the council chooses to have us come back and more clearly delineate what I think is a change in policy, so that there is very clear boundaries and rules and regulations when these projects start, then that's certainly the council's prerogative as a policy perspective. As your city manager, my advice to the council is that you get to a point when you have put in more money, regardless if it's home money, city affordable housing money, regardless what that is, then the project is worth. I believe we have come to that point with this project. Ultimately, it remains up to the council to make that determination. And regardless of the council's determination on this particular project, we will continue to move forward, to come back to the council with policies for future projects, so we do not find ourselves in this position again.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. First of all, I think there's a little bit of an inference floating around that somehow the staff is responsible for what did or didn't happen in this or other instances. And that's not the case. I mean, this is a private project. This is not a city project. The staff has made available to people and to organizations who are working on projects as a service. It's not necessarily an obligation. We do that to facilitate the project, make sure it goes effectively, make sure it complies with the regulations, but we're not, at the end of the day, we're not responsible for that. If the policy, unspoken or whatever it might have been, and I haven't seen it written anywhere, if it's a blank check, that policy needs to change. We can't have a blank check policy. That's absolutely not appropriate. We have a duty to use the money responsibly. We shouldn't just be spending it for the sake of spending it. We have places throughout the city that could use the money, and we can find a place to use it effectively. I don't think we need to define a new policy. I just think that the policy should be, the city does what it's obligated to do and lives up to its obligations. If there's an extraordinary circumstance, and I find that these are unusual circumstances, but personally, I don't find them to be particularly extraordinary, perhaps that would warrant looking at it again or looking at something a little bit differently. But under this scenario, I don't think it's appropriate to grant the additional funding. As the city manager indicated, we did not get the value for what was spent here. It's important for the particular family who has the home, but on the other hand, it's a lot of money that I view could have been much better spent. You could have paid a lot of rent with that. You could have done a lot of other things with that kind of money, and that wasn't used for that. It was used for this limited purpose.
Thank you. Alderman Burris.
I got my question answered. Thank you.
Alderman Holmes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to sit if you don't mind.
You'll go right ahead.
I, as Jeff pointed out, I'm a no vote. And my no vote really goes to the whole concept of community land trust. And I think I've stated that from the very beginning, although I did support it all the way until they bought the property, and I felt that we had expended enough dollars into it, and that's why I have a no vote now. But I want to pick up on what Alderman Rainey said. If I'm not mistaken, I think Mr. Gatson said that this loan is not due until July 1. Is that correct? 2010, July 1, right? So, I would like for them to go back to the bank and see if they can come back then. I might consider changing my vote to get through this, but it would be the very last dollar I would ever spend on the land trust. And I just want to be real clear about that. I said that before. So, I'm not saying anything new. Alderman Jean Baptiste, I'm looking at you, because I told you this before, I wasn't going to spend another dollar on the land trust, but I really would be willing to reconsider if we can get some kind of answer back from the bank. So, I would want to suggest that we hold it until they come back.
Alderman Rainey, you're next.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then I won't. Okay, I won't suggest that then. Okay, I'll take it back, Alderman Rainey.
And you can suggest.
Okay.
Alderman Rainey.
Well, I think they should go to the bank and get the letter.
But I'm not willing to vote, to vote to hold it over tonight, because we can vote no or yes tonight. They can go to the bank and come back to us with whatever the bank says. So, I'm not willing to drag this out. I want to say something about this being a private project. This is no way a private project. Almost every single penny spent on this project is public money. Public money, taxpayers' money. Federal funds are not pennies from heaven. HUD money is not penny from heaven. Home money is not pennies from heaven. It's money that we've sent to Washington that comes back to us in some form or another. I can assure you that if something was inappropriate in this project, HUD would come to us. We would be the ones they'd be talking to. So, as far as I'm concerned, we are joined at the hip at this project, and it's not a private project. On the issue of comparing, why don't we give them this money with all the extensions we've given private developers? Let's think about that. The private developers that we've given extensions to have come to us and said, "We're too smart right now to try and start this project. We're not going to put any money into this project because the economy is bad, we couldn't get a loan, we're not going to do anything. We're asking you to give us three years or five years so that when the time is right, we can go to the bank and start getting our construction loans." There's no comparison to that, with that and this situation here. Absolutely none. This is one where we're being asked for more money, not more time. If Lighthouse had come to us and said, "You know, I know you've afforded us these hundreds of thousands of dollars, but we don't think that the time is right now for us to go out and find a house," I'd be giving them a five-year extension, but that's not what happened here. So, I think it's a mistake to try and make that kind of analogy, because it doesn't work.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Okay. And this is the closing argument of my part. You know, affordable housing is by its nature subsidized housing, people. What is the limit on the subsidy in this situation? What is the policy that drives that? Is it, we get tired of them coming back, or Alderman Holmes saying, "Well, I didn't like that model in the first place." Once we agree as a council to support a particular initiative, to me, it's our initiative. Once we agree to have our staff commit the time to advise, to counsel, it's ours. It's not my individual choice as to whether or not I like it. It is our collective task. And so, at this particular point in time, are we saying that the subsidy is enough? You know, and I see we hardly mention the buyer, the citizen who got the benefit of an affordable home as a result of the subsidy that we've invested. So, and that's our pattern. This is how we produce affordable housing. So, that's what I'm suggesting, that if we want to look at this differently, then, yes, we have to begin somewhere, but I think we have to tell our staff that we need a policy, we need, city manager has to say something that then departs from the way that we have done business in the past. This situation is not one where Lighthouse was in the midst of trying to complete a process when the, or they were faced with the economic downturn prior to getting into it. They were in the midst of the thing. They had already committed. So, a lot of these difficulties are unforeseen, and I think that we have to think about all that. We have to approach it from a planned and conscious character as opposed to spontaneously, "This time around, Lighthouse, you're not going to get over." I don't think that's the way we ought to approach it. We ought to do this differently in order to guide the rest of our relationships with the other CHODOS, who sooner or later will come before us. So, I'm suggesting that we vote to support this allocation at this particular point in time and ask for there to be a formal policy around our relationship with the CHODOS, and what are the limitations on the subsidy, and how do we judge that?
Thank you, Alderman Baptiste. Alderman Tendem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to echo the last statement that Alderman Jean Baptiste made in terms of starting our policy at a given point, which is now. I think, given this project having gone down concurrently with a totally uncharted economy in a tumble, it would be hard to plan, I think. Having come through just a personal project of an addition to a home, I can tell you that even the best-laid plans can get turned upside down in this economy. And so, I guess I'm sympathetic and would like to support this $20,000.
Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of questions about the $20,000 loan from North Shore Bank. When was the loan secured? It's a loan that comes due July 1. Is that the full amount of the loan, or is that when the first payment is due? And how long has this obligation been outstanding? And what did city staff know about it when it was undertaken?
I'd like to address your first comment first. We worked carefully with city staff. We had to in order to do the closing, because the city was providing some assistance, and they were also providing encumbrance on the land that we own as well as on the house. That's how the $99,500 is preserved with its restricted loan time. Now, having said that, the loan was issued at the time of closing in order to permit us to close. The buyer had expected to be able to stay in her apartment for a longer time. She was told that she had about three weeks to vacate her apartment. So, she had the option of either moving to another rental apartment or moving into this house. The staff met with the bank to talk about the situation, the bank and I. We all, we came, they came here to the Civic Center. We talked about financing. We talked about assistance to the buyer. All those things were done in cooperation with the staff. We didn't do it in an absence of awareness of the staff. The staff had to work very quickly, in fact, in order to make this closing possible, because it was such a short time. So, it is a partnership. I can certainly agree that it would have been better if we had been able to come and say, "Here's our issue. What do you advise us to do following the process that we've used in the past," which is to go to the staff, staff make an opinion, go to the Housing Commission, Housing Commission reviews it, come then to this body via the committees. We weren't able to do that because we had to close. If we'd lost this buyer, we probably would have been carrying the house several more months. And that was the issue. And I want to reiterate that we are a housing developer. We are affected by all the things that affect other developers. The Planning and Development Committee has in the past provided assistance at the end of a project to private developers using home funds. So, we're not asking for something that has not been done in the past.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no further lights. It's been moved and seconded that we pass the request from the Citizens Lighthouse Community Land Trust for an additional $20,000 subsidy. City Clerk, could we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
No.
Alderman Holmes.
No.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
No.
Alderman Rainey.
No.
Alderman Burris. Five against four. Who else?
Five to four, the motion fails.
No, we can't. We can't.
Next. Who's the chair of economic? We have one more committee, the, I guess it's from the Economic Development Committee, the Technology Innovation Center.
And.
Alderman Rainey.
Thank you, Alderman Wynn, for chairing the last meeting. The item that has been removed from the agenda is the Technology Center. Is that the one?
Yes.
All right. Madam Mayor, on behalf of the Economic Development Committee, O3, I move for action a funding request in the amount of $100,000 for the Technology Innovation Center.
Second.
This includes a requirement that a city representative be appointed as a board member within 90 days after the dispersment of funds.
Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I ask for this to be removed from the agenda. I'm going to support this motion, but I do have serious concerns about this. My main concern is information that was presented to us both at Economic Development and in our packet this evening about how the board is constructed, the amount of work that they've done to track individual businesses that have benefited from the TIC. I just feel strongly that there is more work that they should have done and information that they should have given us. For example, they say, "Due to our recent lack of financial resources, TIC has not tracked in detail the performance of our Evanston graduates. While we know there are at least 27, there may be more, and an accurate assessment of their contribution to the tax base and their collaboration with other local firms will greatly increase our understanding of their economic impact and help us prioritize our activities going forward." I think this is just very basic to a business plan, and it's something that I would have expected from an organization that's asking the city for $100,000. My suggestion is that as this moves forward, and this is based on conversations that I've had with both the city manager and Carolyn DeLuttre, this is a wonderful opportunity. I don't want to make anyone think that it is not something that I don't support, because I do, but I do think it needs to be run in a more businesslike manner. And I would love to see the board expanded to include not only those people who have benefited from the incubator itself, and I'm thinking off the top of my head, those businesses like Peapod or Brella. I would love to see them on the board. They understand the process, they understand the benefits, and I think they can be very helpful. I would like also to have us review the organization's activities more on the basis of what we do for F-Mark, which is, when you're asking the city for money, you come back on a regular basis. You talk to us about it. And I know they do that at Economic Development, but I think as a council, we do need to hear this as well. So, like I said, I'm going to support this tonight, but I really do expect a little bit more from the organization and a lot more research going into this. I do think something as basic as tracking the performance of individual members is something that didn't require a lot of resources and could have been done and would have helped us make our decision a lot more easily than it has been.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Well, I'm sorry I wasn't at the last Economic Development Committee meeting, because I would have asked these questions there, but a couple of things that concern me. Number one is, there are no rents recorded in the receipts. Do they not charge, for those of you, Alderman Wynn, do they not charge rent?
I don't know.
Well, they're here.
There's a big zero under rents receipts. They get paid for telephone, they get paid parking fees, you know. So, that's one question. Second point, this sort of goes to some of Alderman Jean Baptiste's comments about the way we administer housing funds. And I know that Director Walker has spoken about this in Economic Development. There's no plan for how we issue this money. You know, they come and they say, "We want 100,000." We give it to them, or we don't give it to them. This is 50% of the total budget of this organization. We are the only ones contributing, us and CD, unless there are other receipts that they're not reporting here. I think, I really think we need a policy, and this would just be one item in a series of guidelines. We shouldn't give 50% to somebody, I mean, of their budget. I think we ought to start looking at matching funds for things such as this. I think this is wonderful. I mean, to see those guys come up here and tell us what they do. I mean, we have to have this in our community, but I think there's a better way to go about supporting it. supporting it. They need to go out and raise money elsewhere, they need to start charging some rents. I can't, I don't understand that part of it. Where are the rents? Can we have an answer?
I think an answer's coming.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Alderman. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Charles Happ, chairman of the Technology Innovation Center for the past five years. With me this evening is also Tim Lavengood, our executive director, who's been the executive director of Technology Innovation Center for 10 years as well. I would point out that when the Technology Innovation Center as a board, Tim Lavengood came to me and the board, which was that time comprised of city representatives and Northwestern representatives, as well as Evanston Adventure was represented on the board, they came to me after 17 years, and the building that they were in, one of the buildings was in foreclosure at 1840 Oak, and the other building was at 906 University, and the university was reclaiming that building for their maintenance department. So ineffective, what I would say is that the Technology Innovation Center was all, for all practical purposes, broke and homeless about five years ago. And that's when they came to me as a 35-year Evanston landlord who pays over $700,000 in real estate taxes, but I was in a position to offer the Technology Innovation Center space at that point in time. Since then, I've attracted 48 companies with over 205 employees. Our banner is in the window for Google Us, and I can guarantee you, we're going to have 205 votes tomorrow for Google. And I'm in a position to be able to afford rents to Technology Innovation Center as the administrative offices. And that's why we can't afford this year, with the state of Illinois cut our funding on September 8th, retroactive to July 1, which cost us time, money, and aggravation. And I fortunately have been in a position after 22 years of social service on the North Shore, to be in a position to offer the administrative offices of Technology Innovation Center free rent for that year. My enthusiasm has far outlasted my resources, but we are at little at our wits' end, and we appreciate the work that Alderman Rainey has done, both with our CDBG grant as well as the Economic Development. We are in the sixth month of petitioning for this request. I am here all night to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am inclined to support the request as well and want to remind staff and council that the Innovation Center's application for these funds kind of brought to light the fact that we didn't have a regularized process for applying for business grants such as this. And would like to see some more professional application process so that we get regular standardized information about these business grants. And we are in the process of developing that right now. I'm also interested in kind of the follow-up to what happens with the grant money, the outcome measures. How does this money, what is the difference it's going to make? What are the tangible results from the city's investment in the Innovation Center? And how are we all better off because of it? And would also like to see the Technology Innovation Center do some different capacity building, building its board, expanding the board beyond what is kind of like a closely held corporation so that you have input from the larger community that is now going to be supporting it, I think.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
We've, we've discussed these things at great lengths. We have not, I heard Alderman Rainey use the word grant earlier tonight regards to this $100,000. We have not up until this point, as far as I know, known whether it has been a loan, a grant, a contract, a fee for services. We have yet to have that set aside for us. However, with the addition of a city representative on our board, we hope that that would, A, increase the size of our board and the size of our working staff, and also give us some direction as far as what we will be doing with that $100,000 more specifically. If I'm, I've been an elected official like you have been for 10 years. If I was running for president of the United States, my job day one would be to get reelected. And if this money is granted to us, I can guarantee you that with our new board of directors and with the money that we granted, we will be working day and night to get another $100,000 a year from now, and we will not disappoint you in our performance because we've got a 24-year track record, and I think you heard very passionately from some of the business owners and young entrepreneurs this evening.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
I understand some of the things you said, but I was, I was telling behind, you know, so I was, I didn't grasp everything. But it is a grant, number one. Number two, I support this grant. Number three, the Economic Development Committee feels that we need to, to, to really be on the cutting edge of the fight to bring economic development in this city, and that we have not been doing this kind of work in the past. And so at the committee level, we embraced the, the requests you made, we asked you to come back, you gave it, gave us a budget, we criticized our own process, referred you to the CDBG process, because we, we've done grants before, so we know how to get that done. So we want to get all that together. But the key thing is that we support the work that your Technology Center has been doing. And at this particular point in time, I think that some of the suggestions that Alderman Fisk has made and others that have been made to you will, should be incorporated so that we become more effective. The city's involvement is going to at least connect us to what it is that you're doing, and we hope that this is the beginning of a process where you could get a development officer, could get out there and get as much money as possible to make sure that you quadruple the number of businesses that come through there. So I support this request, but I think it's a work in progress and that we will benefit, you know, handsomely down the line.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Burrus.
Thanks for being here. As you, as you know, I've supported the tech center very much. The reason, I just actually want a clarification, because I know that the businesses in the center are paying rent, but could you explain how they're paying rent and who they're paying rent to? Because I think part of Alderman Rainey's question about that is that how this budget is, I'm sorry, although you don't see this, but how the budget we see, it looks like the businesses aren't paying any rent, but I know that that's not the case. And could you just explain that for everybody?
Correct. Yes. The 48 companies that comprise the Technology Innovation Center do pay rent at one of two locations. First location is 820 Davis Street, which you all know at downtown Evanston. They do pay rent to 820 Davis Street LLC, of which I am the owner. The balance of the companies, about seven companies who are light manufacturing exporters, pay rent to 825 Chicago Avenue, which is the third door south of the intersection of Maine and Chicago. So they are both buildings, let no, nothing be unclear, they, both the buildings are owned by me. However, there are administrative offices which include the reception area, the executive director's office, my office, because I'm there every day, the conference areas and restrooms and all the other common areas, including the kitchens, that are subjected to rent in normal cases. But I, as I explained earlier to you, I explained that I'm in a position where, because of the financial troubles that we had when SBDC cut their funding, I was in a position to be able to grant those administrative offices to the Technology Innovation Center to keep our operations going.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Happ. I know you've made a significant contribution to the community, and we really do appreciate that. My concern right now is there are three of you on the board, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And then Mr. Walker from the city would be the fourth board member?
Mr. Walker would be in charge, I believe, as naming the fourth director. We have invited him to be that board member. We've got specific guidelines for what we think a good board member would look like and do and act like, so that, but that would be up to, I believe, Mr. Popquist and Mr. Walker.
Okay. And when I, what I mentioned before of increasing the number of people on your board to include people, for instance, like Brella or Peapod or some other knowledgeable graduate of, of the program, or someone from EVMARK, would your board consider increasing to the size to?
We would certainly entertain the idea of increasing the size. The three, soon to be four directors have, have expressed a strong passion for the job. They have also paid an extremely high amount of dollars for that position. I would suspect that if the, if the positions that you're suggesting would be more advisory and not financial, then we do have an advisory board which helps us out from time to time, that comprises bankers, real estate people. But I wouldn't say no to you, but there has been a, a very severe economic price to the board of directors that have been on right now.
Okay.
And to invite Brella to be one board vote without paying the six figures that the all the rest of us did, it would be difficult to rationalize.
Okay. This is where I think I'm getting confused, because the, are you saying that the board members are partners in the real estate, the ownership of the real estate? Is that, is that correct?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Where you, the, the directors, Tim Lavengood, who has made a substantial financial contribution. Mine has been documented, it got to a point where I invited my wife in, who's a very strong supporter of this as well and does some IT work and does the billings for the companies, because the companies do pay us programming fees, telephone internet fees, service fees, things like that. So there are three of us on the board right now.
Okay.
My wife and I own both buildings.
Okay. So the operation of the TIC, and this is the marketing, development, attracting the new companies, all of that, that is controlled right now by the three, you, your wife, and Mr. Lavengood?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct? Okay. Well, I, I have a problem with that. I, I would like to see the board expanded so that people who have knowledge in both attracting new businesses and making decisions about, about the TIC be included on the board and whether that's-
You would like to see more people.
I would like to see your board larger, frankly, to make, to make better decisions to make sure that the TIC is, is operating the way we would like to see it, that everyone in Evanston would like to see it operate, and that is a healthy, a healthy energetic business. So, so you're saying that you, you would be, it would be acceptable to you to have your advisory board participate in this discussion on how to make the, how to make the business more profitable and attracting more people, but that you, your wife, and Mr. Lavengood would be the ones actually making the decisions about who would be on your, your actively, your active board, who, your decision-making board? Is, is that correct? Do you understand what I'm saying?
No.
Okay.
I got lost at healthy and enthusiastic.
Okay.
We have 320 alumni in 24 years.
We want you, we want you to succeed. I'm concerned about how limited your board is and the decisions that the three of you are making that I don't think are well, are, have a strong business base. I don't think that you've been operating the way we would like to, or the way I would like to see you operate. I don't think that you've done some of the homework that you need to do. I think that there has been a failure there. But we want you to succeed, and I want you to have the, to have a board that is operating in a way that gives you the best information so that you can succeed. And I'm trying to figure out how to do that, because you're saying that you would rather have people on your board who have a, a financial interest in your business rather than are just bringing, okay, I'm, all right, then, I'm sorry, I misunderstood that. Could you explain that again for me?
Starting from where exactly? If, if, if a certain person made a large contribution and a certain other person made a larger contribution, and then the city came along with a very large contribution, why would we expand the board to someone who makes no contribution?
Alderman Fisk, let me try.
Thank you.
I, I think, again, I, I agree with the sentiments of many of the Aldermen, that this is an important, key economic engine for the city of Evanston. I think as we've heard this evening, there was a model in place for the governance of this entity that changed when the support of the city of Evanston and Northwestern University ceased. Individuals stepped in to come up with another business model to support that. I think what I'm hearing the council say is you're looking to go back to a business model that more resembles the business model that was in place 17 years ago. And I think what we need to do now is we need to, to work with Mr. Happ and the others that are comprised of the board, understand what has transpired financially with them over the last several years, and come up with a model that is, that helps move the incubator, Innovation Center forward, but also make sure that whatever financial responsibilities that are in place are honored and respected. Is that close to what you're saying, Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thank you.
So I think what we see this $100,000 is doing as, as being that public seed money to help move forward the incubator in, in that model, recognizing the current situation, and hopefully then to bring additional public dollars from other agencies in, bring other companies to help bring money to the incubator and have it flourish and be the real centerpiece of our economic development efforts in Evanston. So certainly that's my understanding of the direction of the council if this motion passes.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Well, you know, we asked for financials, or budget, whatever. This is what we got. You say that, are you saying that all of the people, I, I heard you say two things. The people that came up here tonight, the other people in the two buildings are not paying any rent for space they're in?
No, they're all on individual leases.
Okay. All right, stop. Okay. Why then, under 2009 actual, you have telephone on the amount there, parking fees, these are receipts, rent, office rents, zero for 2000, office rent, zero for 2008 actual, zero for 2009 actual, and zero for the 2010 budget, your projection. Why are those zeros?
There are-
How can we know what, what your, your receipts are and how much we should contribute if we don't know what the whole picture is?
There are 48 companies on individual leases with building ownership. Those leases are negotiated individually. Even though they run for a year, they are given 30- and 60-day exit clauses because that's suitable to an entrepreneurial startup. They pay rent to building management and ownership.
Mr. Happ, all I want to know is what numbers can I put in these columns? You must know.
And then, after the 48 companies-
I don't-
There is the administrative staff of the Technology Innovation Center, which is comprised of Mr. Lavengood and myself, the conference room-
That's under dispersments, right?
And that is zero. That is donated space by building ownership.
Okay, that's good, but I'm not interested in that. If that's zero, what I'm interested in is what do these multiple leases have in total value for the year 2008, 2009, and what are you projecting for 2010? When we, we do not give $5,000 of CD money to somebody who doesn't tell us what their expenses are or what their receipts are. And we're giving you $100,000, and I'm still voting for it, but I want to know what these numbers are. I want to know, how much money do you really have to operate the incubator? That's all I want to know. That's all I want to know.
And Alderman Rainey, members of the council, I think one of the challenges we have as we move forward is to separate the incubator from the real estate.
Right. Yes. That's what we're, that's the problem.
And, and I hope that in working with the good folks at the incubator, we will be able to clarify that. Again, this was dead, and Mr. Happ and his wife and Mr. Lavengood said, we cannot have this be dead. And while the city of Evanston and Northwestern University, for reasons I was not here, I won't even speculate, but as they walked, as those partners walked away, the, this incubator continued. And it continued basically as an opportunity for technological assistance through what is known as the incubator, and Mr. Happ having two buildings available for entrepreneurs to lease. What I hope we can do, Alderman Rainey and members of the council, is come back to the previous model. We have to do some work to make sure that that previous model makes sense financially for the property owner, because obviously he's invested lots of money, time, energy, sweat, all of the above in these properties. But the technology incubator itself is the program, is, is the programmatic way of bringing those companies in by nurturing them, mentoring them, putting on programs. Those are the things we have to reconstruct. And again, I appreciate the council's support of this, but there is definitely still work to be done to create a model that is a more standard model that can not only receive future funding from the city of Evanston, but hopefully once again Northwestern University and other private and, and public partners.
Well, why, why are security deposits on this? Why is it even listed here? I mean-
I can answer that question. It's another contrib- It's another contribution that I make. It inspires Mr. Lavengood and others to rent offices at the Technology Innovation Center. The arrangement with the management company, the ownership and the Technology Innovation Center, is to have the rents go to the management company. Security deposits are held by the Technology Innovation Center and used for operating cash flows.
Oh, really? I thought the last said you couldn't use security deposits.
Alderman Wilson, I have you down, but I, I would like to say something. Having worked with the tech center for more than a year, I understand all of your questions and concerns, Alderman Fisk yours and, and Alderman Rainey's. Having worked with the tech center folk for over a year, I've concluded that they are the best game in town in terms of creating businesses that stay in Evanston and building our economy. I have also concluded that tech people are tech people, and they are difficult to work with, as you are finding, because they think differently, certainly than I do, who am not a tech person. But I do strongly support this group and think that they are contributing a great deal to Evanston, and I think that we can contribute a good bit to them with a board that is either advisory and with Mr. Walker possibly joining their board. Alderman Wilson?
I, I don't really have much to add. I had the opportunity to visit the center as well and, and meet some of the people that are working there, and, you know, I think what we just had was a bit of confusion here. You're wearing two hats. You're a landlord, you own the building, and the other hat is the program, and we're funding the program. So I think you've gotten, hopefully, a pretty good sense of some direction on the comments and concerns that-
Yes, sir.
-that we all have as far as, you know, transparency is what we're looking for, accountability and accounting information. So with that directive, I'm, I'm supporting the-
Thank you, sir.
... request.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk? Alderman Rainey?
Well, you know, there might be technology geek types at the Innovation Center, and, you know, they're a whole special breed, but this right here is a landlord and a property manager. And trust me, they know how to do financials, they know how to do record-keeping, they know how to do reporting, and they also, they know how to do all of that. So I'm, I will say to you, while I think what has been presented as the organization is wonderful, we desperately need you, but I think the presentation is terrible, and it fails to meet the mark. I'm going to vote for it, but I will not ever vote for it again unless we have some regulations in place, some standards in place, and we get the real big picture of the financials of this organization. I mean, while this is real estate, while this is real estate, people are being paid salaries, they're being paid salaries, they have a fairly incestuous board, a very small board, and I don't think the, the budget is transparent at all. And I, I don't care how wonderful the organization is, how nice Mr. Happ is, how many people support it, the, the budget, Terry, financial information does not meet any standards at all. And so hopefully, things will improve by the next time. And if I had been in economic development, I would have encouraged us to meet this out in quarterly payments as opposed to one lump sum.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, seeing no further lights. City clerk, could you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Burr?
John Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burrus?
Aye.
To nothing, the motion passes.
Thank you very much. We look forward to being an economic development partner with the city of Evanston and Mr. Walker. I open invitation as well to the rest of you who have not yet come over. Most of you have, and I appreciate that, but we look forward to seeing the rest of you there to answer any questions you might have about our operations. Thank you.
Thank you. That can-
Madam Mayor, could we get one final statement from Mr. Happ? And that is, if our city manager recommends Mr. Walker to your board, I want to make certain that you're accepting that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Alderman John Baptiste?
Yes, Alderman Rainey, I would, you know, go a step further and make a reference to the city manager to have our council, you know, consult with Mr. Happ to make him understand legally what are the, the requirements to make sure that the board is properly organized. Okay? All right. He shook his head and said yes.
Thank you. All right, that concludes everything except call of the wards. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to make a reference to planning and development regarding the city of Evanston zoning fees. This is on page 287 of our packet tonight. I would very much like the residential owner occupied units in the transitional T1 and T2 zones to be moved into the R1, R2, R3 column in order to reduce the cost of variations from 275 to 165. As we've said many times, those single-family residences in the T1 and T2 districts are a single-family home, is very much like the R1 neighboring houses as well. And other than that, Google us.
Thank you. Alderman John Baptiste? Oh, whoa. Parliamentarian, you need a second. Is there a second?
I just did.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear.
No, was it referred? Is it referred? She doesn't need a second for referral to-
Whether she needs a second or not, she has a second.
Nothing, okay, she got it. But for a standing committee, you don't need a second.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
You're welcome.
See?
Yes, Alderman John Baptiste?
Your honor, a couple of things. I wanted to ask the city manager to expand the call for the assistance with, with the census work, to try to incorporate our ethnic umbuds person in the process of outreach to all of the ethnic communities. Ethnic communities don't want to be counted. They, they, they will not do what they're supposed to do. So we've got to really outreach to them and, and make the information available through the churches. St. Nick's has a very good, strong Hispanic population, there's a strong Haitian population there too, St. Mary's as well, and there are a few other churches around, and there are several radio programs that we need to outreach to. But we, we've got to be aggressive because people will just not do this and will lose money. I wanted to quickly give you guys a brief update on the Haitian projects. We just finished loading a fourth, two more 40-footers. We've loaded four 40-foot containers with the collaboration of Pat Hughes, the mayor's son-in-law, and his wife, kids, and a bunch of friends, and a number of members of the Haitian community. The containers are loaded with medical supplies, crutches, walkers. As you know, a number of people suffered amputation and leg injuries, canned food, number of clothing items that people have given us. And so these containers, the last two are still here, two of them already in Miami. These last two will get to Miami towards the end of the week and beginning of April. Some of us will return to Haiti and help do distribution. Thank you very much for, to all of you who have supported. The Haitian community through the Haitian American Lawyers Association is having a major event fundraiser and a call for collaboration, long-term partnership, to help with rebuilding the judiciary in the country on the 31st of March at the Hyatt Regency. Don, while you're downtown, you don't have to come back home right away. It's at, it starts at 5:00. So please support the initiative and get involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn?
Yes, Madam Mayor, as many of you know, there are four members of the council and the city manager at the National League of Cities Conference this past week, last Monday and Tuesday. And I, I just, I know Alderman Grover and Alderman Tendem and Alderman Burrus will, I'm sure will have something to say about it. I wanted just to let everyone know, it was, I think all of us think a very, very valuable conference to go to. We split ourselves up and each went to several workshops, and I know I've been sharing with staff a lot of the ideas that we came back with, and plan to continue to communicate with, we all collected cards and continued to be in contact with a number of other people who we met at the conference. The other purpose of the conference was, because it was held in Washington DC, was to lobby our representatives on Capitol Hill, and very appropriately, all of us went up to meet Congressman, Congresswoman Jan Schakowsky, and we presented her with our water infrastructure project of highest need, and she said that she would do her best to achieve funding for that project. Water infrastructure was a major topic of this, of the conference. Everyone apparently has ancient water pipes, and they are, at one of the workshops I was at, they said a major water main breaks every five minutes in the United States. So obviously, these projects are critically important, but Jan Schakowsky was very glad to see us, and we were glad to see her. The Hill, as you can imagine, was a circus leading up to this. We had, we waited on a long line outside Rayburn Office Building, and Alderman Tendem got into a really interesting discussion with some woman with an odd petition, but we kept him from being hurt. So I, it, it was very worthwhile, and I think that Evanston was very well representative and that I'm hopeful that with the, the good passage of the health bill, healthcare bill last night, that things will continue to keep rolling in a positive direction. And Google us.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. I had the opportunity, along with the mayor and several others and a few hundred of our friends, to spend some time with Olympic gold medalist Shawnee Davis last week. And not only is he a great athlete, but he is a charming and, and wonderful young man. And I appreciate all the people who came out to support him, but I'd also look to everyone in the community to redirect that support, or redirect some of that support at least, to assisting with the plans for redeveloping Crown. I'm excited about the request for proposals, it's going to be going out soon. So make sure everybody voice your support, your support for that, but in the interim in the next couple of days, make sure you, as a first step, voice your support for the Google project. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Thank you, Madam, Madam Mayor. While you all were over looking at Shawnee, we were having a fantastic meeting at Fleetwood on NSP2, and we will have a follow-up meeting on April the 15th about the cities, well, NSP2 and all the other city programs that deal with housing. So I just want to let you know, you might want to come over, and, because we had residents from all over the city, not just from the 5th and 2nd ward. Also wanted to say that I made the announcement at my church yesterday about the census, and I think that if each one of us would take some kind of responsibility wherever we might go to spread the word in terms of getting our residents to really fill out the form and to encourage them, that is really simple. It really does take less than 10 minutes to get it done. So mine is all filled out and in the mail, and I hope everyone will do the same. And I'm trying to Google. I haven't made it yet, but I'm trying to put my vote in, so.
You'll get there. Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, the, the conference in Washington was, was a very, it's fascinating and very informative event. I think the incident on the steps of the Rayburn Building might be a little exaggerated, but I will say, the woman not only had a petition, she had a cell phone and wanted me to call my legislators. When I asked her what I was calling, she didn't even know what she was representing. So we, we did look for the petition and tried to explain as best as could what she was out there, you know, yapping about. I obviously didn't, I obviously didn't agree with it, or would have been yapping. The most interesting session I went to was a, was a food action initiative starting out of, started out of Seattle and King County. And they've combined their sustainable and local agricultural initiatives with fairly strong programs concerning childhood obesity and also after, after school activities. So I have requested from the, the mayor of Seattle, the, a copy of his PowerPoint. It had so many points, I, I really lost my ability to take efficient notes. On a more local thing, we've had a couple break-ins again in the 6th ward. I'd like to remind everybody, when the weather gets warm, keep an eye on your windows and doors. These were very opportunistic entries, not, not forced entries. And finally, I'd like to ask, to refer to the manager and staff to look at our procedure when we do not necessarily have to notify the neighborhood. This is with regard to the, the tower at the firehouse. I know that is not in our ordinance to do that, but I think in an effort to be transparent and to anticipate concerns that might arise, particularly with the growth of the cell industry, that we might consider a different procedure or a different custom to follow. Thank you.
Could you refer it to PND?
I'm sorry?
Could you refer it to PND?
Can I refer, yes, refer that to PND? Madam? Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank everyone for the opportunity to participate in the National League of Cities Conference. It was interesting and fruitful. Alderman Tendem and I attended a reception hosted by the International City County Management Association, and we confirm that we have hired the right person to manage our city. Wally is very well-regarded among his peers, and that was good to know, at least among the peers that he introduced us to. Look out for Alderman Tendem because he does pick a fight. You never know. We got some national perspective on what it means to win $18 million in NSP2 funding, and I think back to a breakfast discussion I had at the Democratic Municipal Officers' Association meeting that Alderman Joe Moore from Chicago wrote me into going to. And, and when we had a discussion with, I think there were folks from Minnesota and Florida, when it became clear that Evanston had $18 million in NSP2 funding coming to us, I don't know if the reaction was outrage or awe, but it's pretty clear that it is impressive. We reached out, as I said, to Chicago's delegation there and enjoyed a nice evening with Alderman Rainey's counterpart, Seth of Howard, Alderman Joe Moore, and his wife, Barbara. And the healthcare debate was really heating up, and the blue state, red state kind of dynamic became clear to us, and we were not amongst blue state folks, and it became very apparent that we live in a blue state landscape here. As to specifics, there are myriad federal programs for grants and research that I would like to follow up with staff about, and I look forward to talking with them specifically about healthy food initiatives and federal support for farmers' markets, community health center funding, some Department of Justice programs for crime mapping and funding for bulletproof vests, which we participated in that program in 2007, but it appears to be one that we can double-dip in, and I'd like to explore that. And then there are the various HUD programs, including the rent subsidy program and some inter-agency partnership on sustainable communities that seem to have some potential, and, and on, and on. So again, it was a good learning experience for me, and so thank you for sending us.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to announce, and I apologize for the late date, but this is the council meeting before, the first meeting on Bike the Ridge. If you're interested in sponsoring or having input into this year's Bike the Ridge, join us Tuesday, that's tomorrow, at 11:00 in one of these rooms on the second floor. I'm wondering about Mickey Three's presentation. Not everything was clear to me, but we do allow vendors, do we not, city manager? And with licenses?
Mayor Alderman Rainey, I was also a little confused myself and was going to ask staff to follow up.
Could we follow up with him and clarify?
I'd, I'd like, I talked with him on the phone, and I think we should follow up and clarify, but perhaps this will help. He has had- He has had seven knee operations, and he said it takes him a half hour to set up his pedaling operation, and that he can't move it every, what do we require, every 90 minutes? That simply won't work for him.
It seemed like that was an issue. So I think, maybe anybody who has a disability doesn't have to move it. I would just like us to try and accommodate him. For those of you who don't know, he, this man, you know, the good, bad, and the ugly, a long, long, extremely interesting history in this community, and just, would just love to be able to help out in some way. I'm just glad to see he's still out there fighting. Finally, I'm wondering if DuPage Water Commission's misery could turn into some joy for the city of Evanston. I'm not sure whether we can, we can do DuPage County, but that water commission is something that we ought to all read about and learn about, the problems that they're having. It's utter chaos, total confusion, and I would like us to look into seeing if we can make some kind of connection there. Google us.
Thank you. Alderman Burrus?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too attended the National League of Cities. All the other Aldermen already pretty much said what happened. But one of the sessions that I attended that I thought was really important was a session on how to do effective lobbying from an elected official's perspective to other elected officials. I think it's a lot that we could take away from that, focusing also not only on the elected official, but on the elected official's staff and legislative aides. I think we need to do a better job of getting information to those people as well as just the elected official. And hopefully, we'll spend more time in Washington and Springfield and have a lobbying company of our own soon. It's a very important thing to do. And I agree, Mark did start a fight on the Capitol Hill. The Shawnee Davis event was fabulous, and thank you to Doug and his staff and Eric Palmer for getting so many news organizations out there. It was really neat, and you can tell Shawnee was excited, and he was like the Pied Piper. These little kids were running around, and you could see when they came up to him, the glow in his face. And it was really a proud moment that he really came from our Robert Crown. And also, I want to echo Alderman Wilson's plea for ideas for Robert Crown. Alderman Wilson, Alderman John Baptiste, and myself, we'll be looking at the request for qualifications for a new Robert Crown, and we're hoping to move that along. And yes, Google. You should Google all of us. Google all of our names, find out what we're doing.
Thank you, Alderman Burrus. Alderman John Baptiste?
I forgot to say Google us too, so, never mind. No, but I also wanted to say to Alderman Tendem that your partner, Neil Moglen, was there. He did a fantastic job. He gave us an entire day a week ago last Saturday to load up these containers. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
And one thing, the gold medal was amazing. I'd like to see some more gold medals. That thing was spectacular. But pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2A, I move that the city council convene to executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, litigation, and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5ILCS120/2, C1, C11, and C21.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman John Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rayney?
Aye.
Alderman Burrus?
Nine to nothing, the motion passes. You're getting good at speed, Rod. That was, I think, one of your fastest.
I hate my pity. I hate getting wet.
I'll talk with you. You're the celebrating gentleman.
Really? Where?